And we're ready whenever you are.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Kathy, would you please call roll?
Mayor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy. Here. Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Rees.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Coram present.
We have several presentations tonight, and we'll move again with fire chief Stephen Kelly.
Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to take a second. We're not a week yet from the Fire at the Towers, but I want to take the opportunity to say thank you to all of our mutual aid partners in fire, EMS, and law enforcement, support staffs at the city, the county, the state. The response was overwhelming. The teamwork was incredible. And I'll be preparing a long list of individual recognition for council consideration for the next meeting. But I wanted to say again, just to everybody out there that helped, came to the call for help, the immediate call to help with the fire and the rescue, the immediate call to get people to temporary quarters, and the absolute, again, overwhelming response that we've had in the days post taking care of the displaced victims. It's been great to see and been great to be part. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? I had a brief discussion with Melissa Brissette today, as everyone knows, she's been running everything for the Housing Authority. And in order to get out the things that are needed in the community for those residents, the Augsburg Housing Authority has created a Facebook page that will be going live tonight. The Facebook page will only have the availability to get information from. There is no commenting to be made on it, but the Facebook page is going to be OGDHA. So if anybody is looking for how to assist the victims going forward, that is going to be the way that they will be putting out all of their information. So again, that will be going live tonight. Thank you.
I think it's only fair to acknowledge the many people who have stepped up and assisted in all the cause, not only the great job by the first responders, but many in the community that have come together to assist many of the displaced people and quite frankly, the tragic event that occurred.
Steve, do you have more?
Yep. Excuse me. Mayor Next, I've got a couple of promotions this evening. It's a great honor, distinction. I present the council tonight firefighter Alan Rickett for promotion to fire captain.
Go ahead. Raise your right hand if you need to. I, Alan Rickett.
Hi, Alan Rickett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of fire captain.
The duties of fire captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Mayor Next, I'd like to present Mr. David La Rock. Excuse me. David La Rock has worked for many years, almost 20 as a matter of fact, in our water treatment plant. Again, distinct honor to announce Dave has been promoted to our chief water operator.
I am David La Rock.
I, David La Rock.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Chief Water Treatment Plant Operator.
Chief Water Treatment Plant Operator.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Long time coming, brother. Good job.
Thank you.
I believe you have another update.
Mayor, for council consideration, just presenting this tonight, no action required. Just I wanted to send out the rough outline of the next step in the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act funding. As you're all aware, we've worked hard to provide funding to small business and nonprofits. We've had a couple rounds of that. I think we've adequately canvassed the city. The next plan is to move now towards the individual assistance plan. So what you have in front of you tonight is staff's initial proposal of how we'll send some funding to individuals targeted to fix up, work on repairs around homes in the city. So I asked council to take a look at that. Please send us some feedback. What we'd like to be able to do is formalize this for the next meeting. Unlike the last, where we brought to council each award, what we're looking to do now is have the program approved with a not-to-exceed amount of the money that we can spend so we can move quickly to this. We've formed a streamlined process that I believe will be quick so that people can get their money and begin the improvements. There'll be two grant offerings. One will be exterior projects to work on outside windows, doors, siding, roofs. And then the other to go towards critical infrastructure upgrades of electrical, plumbing, heating systems, et cetera. So individuals will be eligible for a grant in each. It wouldn't be limited to just one. So we're looking for up to $5,000 to fund the project. And there'll be a match. Well, we're proposing here is to establish three levels of match based on income. So I'll ask council to please review that and send me feedback. I'd like to bring a final proposal for approval to the next meeting.
So an individual can apply for both an interior and an exterior?
Yes, sir.
And the income levels, you'll have those for us?
I will. Andrea, we're using, what are we going to use to establish our income, the median income?
Carrying mean income.
Thanks. Do you have some department updates?
So council, while Andrea makes her way up here, what we're starting now is this format. We'll have half the departments. It's one meeting a month and half the others. We've given you again the outline of what each of the departments will be presenting tonight so you could prepare questions or be prepared. I've asked each of the department heads presenting tonight to go through this information. A pretty high level, but it gives you a chance to communicate directly with them and then back with council. So we'll start with Andrea, Planning and Development Department, which includes also code enforcement.
So, good evening, mayor and council. As you'll see, I'm just going to give a brief update on planning, assessment, code enforcement, engineering, and recreation. In those departments, there are eight total funded positions. Seven are hired and one is vacant. That vacant position is for a planner number two. We have finally worked through the process with the county civil service on that. And the job will be posted tomorrow. We'll be accepting applications through April 15th. And it will be, we will publish a legal notice that will be published next week in North Country this week, advertising locally. We'll also be looking to publish that and other professional establishments throughout New York State to get a wider casting. Priorities right now, there are, we are working through several projects, including three recently funded grant projects. The Main Street Pump Station, which as you recall is funded by NBRC, largely a million-dollar grant from NBRC. The preliminary engineering report for improvements on East David Street, funded through HCR's CDBG program. And environmental site assessments in four critical areas of the city's borough, Brownfield Opportunity Area. That's for Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental site assessments. That's funded through Department of State. Those three programs are all in various states of undergoing contracts, securing the funds through contracts with the various funding agencies. And work is projected to begin in the late spring, early summer on all three of those projects. We also have a scheduled kickoff meeting to commence work on the citywide reevaluation. That is scheduled for Thursday morning. That's an informal team meeting with staff and members from GARR Associates, who will be conducting that work on behalf of the city. And again, as we've mentioned throughout the budget process, the work that happens over the next year on that project will impact the 2024 city tax rate. So it's a long-term project, and we'll be giving you regular updates on that throughout that process. We also are in the process of conducting and completing the asbestos surveys on all the city, on all the properties that were acquired following the November 30 foreclosure, tax sale foreclosure proceedings, following the lifting of the moratorium on foreclosures. Those are about 80% complete. And we, at the end of that, we will have asbestos surveys for each of those properties. So we'll be able to then categorize those into surplus properties, those that are condemned, that are in need of demolition, which ones need asbestos abatement before that can happen. And also, it will allow us to assess whether or not there are any properties that we would want to undertake demolition of in-house if there is no asbestos. We are working through the Ready projects. We are getting ready to go out to bid with the improvements to the Maple City Trail. Those bid documents are projected to be publicized on March 22nd and brought back to you all for consideration at your first meeting in May for potential award. And then the last of our priorities kind of circles back to Brownfield Cleanup. And that is with regard to the Shade Roller project. We have just posted that project for bid on Friday. And so that is out to bid now, and we're hoping to bring those back to you at the end of April for consideration for award.
I'm sorry, Andrea, which one was that?
Shade Roller Cleanup. So that is to address metals, contaminated soils, as well as concrete-contaminated PCBs. We are, so in the project section, I'll kind of skip past Ready since we just talked about that. This evening, you'll have a resolution before you to call for a public hearing on the sale of 17 Main Street. That project is moving ahead. It has been through the initial planning board review at their March 1st meeting. It is scheduled for final approvals at the April 5th meeting. And there is a scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting to an area variance need for the brewery component of the development proposal for 17 Main Street on March 22nd. So that project is moving ahead, has met all of the requirements so far during their due diligence period in terms of providing the, forming the LLC, providing the financial information, as well as pursuing site plan review through the planning board. So that project is on track. The Diamond proposal, we are, we have continued to have regular monthly meetings with the developer. It's a much larger project, as you all know, a much larger scale project. And that one is falling slightly behind in terms of meeting the deadlines, but we are in regular communication with the developer. The comprehensive development plan that you all have tentatively accepted as a draft has been through 239M review, is in the process of being updated and revised to include numbers from the 2020 census, which are now out and available. And we are looking at bringing that plan to you in the coming months following formal edits and review by agencies through the seeker process. The Recreation Department is finalizing the summer camp schedule for 2022, which will include a new camp, the volleyball camp, as well as a more detailed arts camp in addition to our standard sports programs. So we'll be bringing that draft brochure to you at your first meeting in May. And the camps start at the end of June. The commercial cannabis ordinance has been submitted to the attorney for review. So that is moving forward. And I already kind of gave you an update on where we are with surplus properties and asbestos surveys. The two issues that we're sort of working through with projects, we're still working through land acquisition with the property owner adjacent to the Maple City Rail Trail Extension. We have gotten authorization from DOT to resume conversations directly with that property owner apart from, although consistent with the federal aid process. So that is very positive news. We've submitted all the survey information to the property owner and are starting to have resumed conversations about negotiations to acquire the necessary easement or property to support the extension of the trail. And the only other kind of issue that we're working through right now is related to the Main Street Pump Station and the procurement requirements for a qualified engineering professional. So NBRC is a million-dollar funder of the $1.8 million Main Street Pump Station. The federal government has specific procurement instructions that we are required to adhere to. However, since we are right in the midst of a significant capital construction project of the wastewater treatment facility that this system, Main Street Pump Station, will connect to, we believe that it is in the city's best interest, and it is consistent with our procurement standards that doing a sole solicitation to EDR for this project would be the most beneficial, not only in terms of cost to the city, but also in terms of enabling us to move most quickly to get this project under construction this summer. The federal government hasn't yet accepted our request for sole source procurement on that particular contract, but we are working with them and hoping that it won't slow the project down too much. So that's my very high-level overview of things that are ongoing at the moment. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
The Main Street Pump Station was, I think, an alternate with the sewage treatment plant. But are we going back out to bid, or?
It will have to go back out to bid as a separate project.
In OMH Land, do you handle that as well?
OMH Land? I believe that the city manager is managing correspondence with the psychiatric center and state agencies on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Lot, a lot going on. Next one.
Hey, we have 24 funded positions. We have two out on long-term injuries. Projects completed in February are 10 water main breaks, cutting back snowbanks and corners, water service repairs, sewer repairs, thawing of water services throughout the city, room renovations at City Hall, cold patching, snow violations, securing condemned properties, the thaw and catch basins. Projects for March for water sewer services, arena maintenance, cold patching. We just completed one room at City Hall renovations in March. Building and ground maintenance, then the ice removal at the arena, the last day for ice is March 23rd. Ongoing maintenance is snow removal, equipment maintenance, arena, snow removal, and removal of stolen parks and city-owned properties. For the plants, we have six funded positions throughout this month and next several months. We've got roughly two employees going to trainings. They're working on their two-way water license. And three of them are going for the three-eighth sewer license within the year. Work completed in February is all monthly bacteria samples, monthly ammonia and oil and grease sampling, quarterly sludge cake sampling, daily water quality samples. All monthly work orders are completed. Building and grounds maintenance, monthly DOH and DEC reports, annual filter cleaning. They just did, redid the annual withdrawal permit for water. Generator maintenance was done. Mercury minimization report was completed and sent out. Work to be completed in March is basically a rundown of the same stuff. Monthly DOH and DC reports, bacteria sampling, ammonia and oil, filter cleaning, daily water quality samples, quarterly metal mercury and sampling, annual pretreatment reports is due to. I don't know if anybody's been down by the wastewater treatment plant, but there's been quite an undertaking there. If you've been in it, if you go back at it, now it does not look like the same building. Christian's been doing a great job juggling everything down there, keeping us on track and keeping contractors on track.
What's the new finish date for that?
I think it was June, but I think we might be pushed out. I think COVID, they had some COVID issues early on this year. But I think at the last meeting, they're bringing it back up to speed. They had an additional manpower to try to get ahead of it, so it's not delayed too much.
And you had 10 water main breaks. Is that in February? Is that standard?
Last year, we had six for the whole year.
Wow. Is that because of the weather?
Yes. It's probably the worst one we've had in five or six years. A lot of frost. I think the last time we dug was four and a half feet of frost in the ground.
And those are generally larger mains that you're referring to?
No, it's anywhere from four inch to, I think the biggest one we had this year was eight inch.
Lot of water.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on lead pipes, Shane, is there any discussion about that with the new federal money for lead pipe?
I was just talking to Andrea about that. The gentleman that are at class this week, the instructors promoting that pretty big. So it's hard for us to tell where the lead is. There's really not great detailed records. But we're going to look into it.
Good evening. So it's pretty much business as usual in the clerk's office. There's not much new to report other than what's here. We basically spend our day assisting taxpayers, residents, and other individuals for all the different services we provide in the office, with a concentration, of course, on the city council meeting agendas and minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. My report is clearly not as complex as Andrea and Shane's.
Thank you, Kathy. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So this brings us to public appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person, like just counsel, please come down and hold for about five minutes. Anyone attending remotely, please raise hand feature. You'll have my vote.
Good evening, council. I'm Margaret Hackett. And I have a shout out to all the residents who were displaced last week. I wish I could name them all individually. I didn't think ahead of time to go around and get names and ask their permission, but they really deserve a shout out. It's been a rough go. And it's been an honor to be able to be up there and do what I can up there.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Penny Pruffin. For those of you who don't know me. I saw on the agenda for tonight, there's some appointments that are going to be made, and I just wanted to give you the clarification on those. Section 260, Chapter 16 of New York State Education Law says that the trustees are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council. Our charter, which is New York State Regents Education and University State of New York approved, says, just says the number of trustees. Where the term limits come in is where the confusion seems to be. The Board of Trustees sets the term limits. And due to New York State requesting us to stagger our terms better, the two vacant positions that will be filled tonight by Mark and James will end in 2023 instead of the stated date that it is. New York State came through with all kinds of New York State Public Library law this past year. So they prefer to have things staggered to make things easier. The public library law, the board fixes the term of office, and the board also does the bylaws. We, I just wanted to say that the board and I are looking forward to working with Mark and James, the two new appointees, tonight. Trustee manuals are ready for whenever they would like to pick them up. So that is the clarification. I'd sent an email this morning about changing the date, so it would be official. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have anyone remoting?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Correspondence. I believe we have one letter.
We received a letter from Linda Brander regarding the All Electric Building Act, and a copy of that was attached to the agenda, mayor.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The claims enumerated in general fund warrant, number 05-2022, the amount of $327,268.25. The library warrant, number 05-2022, the amount of $0. Capital fund warrant, number 05-2022, the amount of $485,274.74. And community development fund warrant, number 05-2022, the amount of $0. And community renewal fund warrant, number 05-2022, the amount of $0. As audited, be the same hereby. I will obey ISO move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers. You're muted, sir.
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Rees.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
We have two appointments tonight. The city received notification from the library today that their bylaws were amended at the January 5th, 2022 meeting. And the two vacancies will now have an expiration date of December 31st, 2023. Term mandates stated on the original term. I make a motion to appoint Mark Demars to a five-year term on the Augsburg Public Library Board of Trustees, term to begin March 14th, 2022, and end December 31st, 2023. I so move.
I'll say.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy.
With Penny's support from the podium, yes.
Counselor Powers.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, sir. Your vote?
With Penny's support, yes.
Counselor Rees.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
I make a motion to appoint Jane Capade to fill the unexpired term of Loretta Cook on the Augsburg Public Library Trustees, term to begin March 14th, 2022, and end December 31st, 2023. I so move.
Second. On that one, because back on July 12th, 2021, he's still on an expired term. Okay. The term he's filling that was expired, we passed on July 21st, 2021, but it was through 2025. So if he's filling what we've already passed, this one should be through 2025, not 2023. This is a vacant position, not a new appointment. It is a new appointment, but we're filling it, existing. So I think it needs to be changed to 25 and left at 25.
Now, I'll second that motion.
You could go back and look at the minutes of the meeting, and that's exactly what we're set. So we're not. I understand that Mr. Demars is, since their bylaws changed, and I'm not even I understand that Mr. DeMars is, since their bylaws changed, and I'm not even a hundred percent sure their bylaws are binding on the, on this council. But but that's something to be looked into, but this one's a twenty twenty-five.
So, so he's already been appointed to a library position through twenty twenty-five in July of twenty-one?
No, she was. He's filling the expired term of Loretta Cook. And the one we filled, that position, we already passed it to go through until twenty twenty-five. So that same position still stands because we've already pointed to it. So in essence, we would be putting Mr. Lefave in to finish out the term of Loretta, which runs through twenty twenty-five. You, you, you can't be sight, you're not going to be um by a change in the bylaws, which we might, which or we, which may or may not apply. That was passed on, their, their bylaw change was July fifth, twenty twenty-two. This was already done back in twenty twenty-one, so our original is fulfilling it.
So we have a second to amend this. Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved. Mayor? I'm sorry, we have to vote.
You gotta do the original.
You have to go as amended. Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Uh, yes, with Penny's support.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
This brings us to items for Council action. First item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
All right, just getting to the resolution. So the resolution designating the certifying officer on behalf of the City of Augsburg for CDBG project number eight-three-six-one CP dash twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Controller, Eva Gray.
A resolution to transfer funds to balance the twenty twenty-one budget. Whereas section C sixty-five of the Augsburg City Charter permits the transfer of an unencumbered balance in an appropriation made for one department or agency to another department or agency, or the transfer of any unencumbered balance in an appropriation made for a division or office to another division or office in the same department upon written request of the city manager. And now therefore be it resolved that the city manager is hereby authorized to make the following budget adjustments for twenty twenty-one, which is outlined on the attached chart to the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
So I just had some questions. I know I asked for explanation on everything, I mean, I don't need explanation on everything. Just a couple items, if you wouldn't mind. The city manager's office over budget fifty-six-nine, I'm just, just wondering what's that, what's that about?
The city manager's office was actually under budget fifty-six-nine-eight-eight because there was a position budgeted there that was never filled.
Okay. And the police?
The police was un- um, under budget, and that was basically related to appropriations that were unspent. I don't have the detail of each line item with me.
Okay. Then on the next graph, we're shifting sixty-two-six-seven-five to the controller?
That is correct.
Over budget or?
It is over budget. Um, what happened in that particular one is the um contracted services is over budget. In addition, um, two of the accounting positions, don't forget, were one hundred percent budgeted in your water and sewer funds. So whereas we started the year with, let's say, ch-ch-ch-ch-four FTEs, two of those FTEs were not in the general fund budget.
Okay. Okay. And then the last one I have is expenses and property.
Yes.
I'm not sure what that is.
That is related to the demolition by and large of Ford Street property.
We didn't have an appropriation for that. Right? I thought we just moved a blind item when we did it. Okay, I'm good.
Kathy, would you please follow the wall?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
No.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Controller, Eva Gray.
A resolution authorizing the bond anticipation note for the Northern Border Regional Commission Grant, NBRC, project number NBRC-two-one-GNY-dash-o-two. Whereas the City of Augsburg has received one million dollars from the Northern Border Regional Commission towards a one-point-eight-million-dollar improvement project for the city's Main Street pump station. And whereas the city's required local match is eight-hundred-thousand dollars or forty-four-point-four percent of eligible project cost. And whereas the city will be taking out a ban throughout the duration of the Main Street Station Improvement Project, then converting to a bond after the project has been completed, and all NBRC reimbursements have been received. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Augsburg authorizes a one-million-dollar ban to be taken out to cover the cash flow of the Main Street Pump Station Improvement Project and ineligible NBRC project cost if applicable for one year. The ban renews in one, the ban renewal in one year may be for a different amount based on the status of the project and the cost to date. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be submitted to NBRC as documentation of the city's commitment to provide the necessary local matching funds to complete the Main Street pump station improvement project.
I'll move that.
I'm gonna say I, I
I'll second it.
Say, I, I think uh John Reach deserves credit on this because um now he pushed us all separated from the contract and the secret grant and uh because of John's effort and stubbornness, uh, the city saved the
Yeah, good.
Saved us a million.
So, but, so this is just for the anticipation note and ask, this is so that we can get the project going, get rolling, and then when it comes down to paying for it, we don't necessarily have to bond.
No, no, the ban is for the cash flow to make the project work. Uh, we'll determine at the end, based on the overall cost, what the city will long-term bond for, if, if any, if we'll just pay, pay the balance. So remember, our, our estimate on this project is one-point-eight. Uh, it'll go to bid soon, so we'll have the actual costs. Uh, this will allow us to get started. I think we'll still get one more round of, of potential ability to apply for some grants through the CFA this year, so we'll, we'll keep working it. This, this will get us started and get us moving.
Uh, Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, I believe Counsel Scamperly would like to
I can do that. Resolution and opposition of Assembly Bill A eight-four-three-one-A and Senate Bill S-six-eight-four-three-B. That would prohibit any city, town, or village from issuing a permit for the construction of new buildings that are not an all-electric building if the initial application for a permit was submitted after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three unless certain circumstances apply. Whereas a bill to prohibit the construction of new buildings that are not all-electric has been introduced in the New York State Assembly, New York State Senate. And whereas power systems outages are far more frequent than gas system outages, and large-scale outages could put millions of New Yorkers at risk across the state during the winter months. And whereas losing power during harsh winters would be disastrous for the residents of the City of Augsburg, St. Lawrence County, and all of upstate New York. And whereas banning natural gas would further increase energy prices and remove consumer choice on how residents heat and power their homes and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that this Augsburg City Council opposes the passage of Assembly Bill A eight-four-three-one-A and Senate Bill S-six-eight-four-three-B that as written would prohibit the issuance of a permit for the construction of new buildings that are not an all-electric building if the initial application permit was submitted after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three unless certain circumstances apply. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to Governor Kathy Hochul, Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, Speaker of Assembly Carl E. Heste, Senator Patricia Ritchie, and Assemblyman Mark Walzak. I saw move.
Second.
Second. I don't know where they think they're going to get all this power on the grid. I don't, I don't like the fact that they're taking away an abundant amount of power now with this, or about to with this new power line that's putting in here from us. I mean, we got all this power that's generated right here in our backyard, and they should be helping us promote, you know, factories or some sort of projects, and, and instead they're taking it away, so.
Well, most people choose natural gas too, because it's a lot less expensive than electricity, so it just adds extra cost for so as a future.
A lot of times it'd be more to transport the electricity than you do to what you use, and actually probably every building.
Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning.
So, resolution introducing an ordinance and providing for public notice and public hearing with regard to the sale of city-owned property at seventeen Main Street.
I'll make that. We got more?
The public hearing will be held on the twentieth of March at six P M.
I'll second it.
Was this explained in terms of two entities? Is that still the case? And yes, everybody's good with everything?
It does, and we'll be covering the, um, the final details tonight, council and executive session. We're a little out of sequence only because we're calling for the public hearing tonight. I'll, I'll brief you on the details if council decides for whatever reason tonight that they didn't want to move forward to that, we could remove this, but I don't want to lose the opportunity to keep the process moving by common public.
Uh, Kathy, would you please call the wall?
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our last item of business will be read by City Commissioner, Steve Jolly.
A resolution to modify labor contract with the CSA hourly unit for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four. Whereas there's a collective bargaining agreement between the city and the CSA blue-collar unit, number eight-four-zero-one-dash-zero-zero, effective January one, twenty twenty, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the city desires to increase all employees covered by the negotiated collective bargaining rates, whereas pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement, the current contract language will be amended only as directed in the attached memorandum of agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the city and the CSA, CSA blue-collar unit agree to modify the contract provisions in order to allow for a rate of pay change in accordance with the attached memorandum. Be it further resolved, the city manager is authorized to sign the attached memorandum of agreement.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll say it.
So a couple, a couple questions here. Obviously, this is a reopen or a start. This was brought about by the city?
Yes, uh, Counsel Powers, if recall during budget time, this was part of our initiative to start to close the pay disparity gap uh between the technician-level employees in the city. This money is, was budgeted for already approved, uh, because it requires a change to the bargaining contract, uh, we're bringing it to council for final approval.
I'm sorry, wait, go ahead. Where, where was that in the budget? Was that in the longevity steps of the uh?
No, Counsel, we plan for it right in the salary line.
Through the DPW?
Yes, sir.
So this is brought forward by the city, and I'm just curious as to the contract. I mean, I, I'm not opposed to anybody bringing forward anything uh as far as the labor agreement. I'm curious to know as to whether or not this would create a me-too aspect coming down the road uh for any, any other entities that, uh, that are in there as well. Recognizing your concern for the pay disparity, but uh, and no, no slight to any of the DPW workers, they've done a wonderful job this, this winter and, and quite frankly, all the time. And uh, in adding the additional responsibilities of renovations in the city hall. But with that being said, um, you know, going forward, you see this as a potential problem for any of the other bargaining units looking to reopen. And in, as far as the pay disparity, and, and again, no slight to um anybody in the DPW, but um, you know, these, these, these trades are all different in nature and offer up a, a, a lot different services and, and require training and investments, if you will, going forward. So um I, I, I guess just under the contract, Article Five and Management Rights, it doesn't necessarily say that the city can reopen, although Article Six does, from the organizational rights, does call for it. But, you know, I'm just curious to know where it all came from, where it stemmed from. I do recall uh some discussion in, in the budget, but um, I don't think it was outlined as readily is uh being discussed here. I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape, or form, but I'm curious to know what this is going to bring down the road.
Uh, Counsel, if you recall, we discussed it uh one, one-time previous uh than the budget. I laid out for council the existing level of the salaries, the gaps that, uh, that I believe existed, and a plan to start to close those. Uh, this makes a a marginal uh improvement uh to it, but it's a, it's an improvement the city could afford. It's roughly in the neighborhood of sixty-five to seventy-five thousand is what it costs us to, to do this this year. Again, I feel like we covered this in great detail uh previous, so again, I'm bringing this now just forward as the change. I don't expect uh this to have any, any impact anywhere else other than, I think, again, we're all committed to ensuring that uh, that the wages uh remain, you know, about as equal as we can, we can do it in the city across all levels. We've, we've, we've made a significant effort to establish, you know, technician-level, work leader, supervisory level, and management level, and I think this helps us close that gap uh in the information I provided early in twenty twenty-one.
So how many members are in this?
Uh, the blue-collar unit has uh, has roughly thirty, thirty, twenty-eight to thirty-two somewhere in there at any given time.
You said that. I was thinking it was this longevity line. That is longevity, but that's not this. So this is an increase this year, and then so there it has a three-and-a-half percent increase, three percent increase for the year. We've got three and a half to to the, okay, so you add another three and a half to the contract, which is already there. Then the following years continue at the three percent.
Correct.
And they've agreed to this?
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't they?
It helps retain. Kathy, would you please?
Let me, let me ask you this just real quickly. You mentioned public benefit. What is the public benefit to this? Retention? Recruitment?
I'd say for certain uh retention, um, you know, without a doubt, I think retention and recognition that uh, that all the technician-level work here is not as far apart as the gap in our pay uh would indicate that it is. Certainly recruitment right now, we're already seeing challenges in, in every area. Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, we're seeing uh challenges in, in, in the recruitment of the trades, uh certainly. Certainly are being impacted most recently because they're they're in high demand. So I think for us to stay competitive, looking across the board at at all the other public service, public works entities, but also looking at what the private sector is paying the similar similar work. So it's pretty significant.
How do you how do you equalize the, you know, how do you make that square with with everybody else as far as, you know, just through pay scale? Right? I mean, yeah, to make it square with equal, you know, to equalize requirements or, you know, certification needs?
Well, I don't I don't see the difference there, Counselor. I think the state heavily mandates all these positions and what their certification, their training requirements are. We comply with all that. I think the way we will make it make it ultimately square with the D P W is we'll continue to look each successive budget year until we get this until we get this gap, you know, well under the thirty percent range that it is now. We've got some work to do in the C S A white collar area. Just happened this year, we've done some recreating positions, reestablishing things. So we didn't have the need to address it, but that'll be in next year's budget, I suspect, is is looking at that as well. There is a significant gap in the hourly wage. And the other issue that we don't address here that's in all these union contracts is the significant difference in healthcare contributions. We just can't continue to, you know, to look the other way and act like that's a good thing. We've got employees paying as little as zero to four or five, six percent to employees paying as high as as twenty percent. I think the sunset or the grandfathering clause on current employees was one thing. But when we look at the same employee year groups and age groups and the healthcare contributions are that different, we have to look at that. We're a small city. We're not. We're not. We're not New York City. We're not Rochester. We're not Syracuse. The whole idea that every bargaining has their 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 shot at the bat shouldn't be the standard in which we establish wages and which we establish healthcare contributions. It's just just not fair. This is a this is a management driven initiative, working with the union collectively to to close this gap.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that aspect, and it's just based off my title alone. We were represented by Council eighty two for thirty years until nineteen ninety nine, and we separated as an independent entity. And it was recognized by Purb and the N L B R, and it was proved rapidly and quickly due to the fact of the nature of the job and the difference in the jobs. And I'm not referring to to any of these, but is it just as far as your statement there is? I'm good.
If you do feel like you have a conflict, you can understand. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Jelloba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Miss Brenner, this is the old business.
Just looking for council's guidance. I think we're we're nearing the point. The next meeting at the latest, we need to make a decision to advise the school board if we will be continuing the S R O service for the following school year starting in the fall of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. We've, as you all recall, we've had a meeting recently. We're providing the interim services right now, but before I send people to training and we get to we get moving in that direction, we really need to make a decision. The the difference in their budget year and our cycle appears to be in conflict. But if you think about it, it's it's really not. They need to be ready to go for their school year. So council's not ready to make a decision tonight. I just thought we'd get the discussion going. Really needs to have a decision for the next meeting, whether we're going to continue the service or not. It will certainly be a matter of next year's budget, but but we need to we need to to decide. I feel like we we had a good meeting with the school board. Counselor Kennedy, Reach and Fisher and I attended that. I feel like we heard from the school district and and their reasons for wanting the city as a as a preferred provider of that service. So I just think council's had a couple of months since then to to mull this over. I just I really need the guidance or or the contract will, you know, will drive us to performing the service. So if that's so, we don't need to do anything if that's council's intent. But if it's ultimately council's intent not to perform the service, we need to make that decision in the next tonight or at the next meeting.
Personally, I prefer the service. I work in a school system, not this one. But when you have a local police officer, the intelligence that they gather, the the communication and the relationships that they establish with the children in the community is immeasurable sometimes, you know. And I support an S R O city having to be a city police officer myself.
I mean, I've been I've been pretty clear on what I wanted. I was clear at the meeting that I support an S R O. And one of the main reasons I support is the men and women of our police department are whom many of the students in our classrooms are seeing on a weekend or a night when there's a domestic or there's a drug case or there is something going on. Those are a familiar face. Then those officers can also relay to the school, you know, if there's been incidents over the weekend and the evenings, things going on with parents. Maybe it's certain kids that need to be handled with care. Fortunately, I don't personally deal with a lot of that, but I know there's a lot of families that do. And I personally would like to see the S R O come from the Augsburg Police Department.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too. I would review what the sheriff did and their rates and what they were charging.
Right, I'm all for, you know, making sure it's fair and consistent across the board payment. But if they're going to reimburse us and pay for the officer, like I said, my personal opinion, it is what it is.
I will honestly agree. I don't see any reason why we're not doing it. We have a contract to abide by, and we should be standing by that contract. You know, providing the service, especially in today's climate out there. I mean, look what's happening around our around our our state and our nation, you know, and, you know, our 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 students and our children in the schools are our next generation of leaders. And I think it's our obligation to protect them. And I I just assume have it right here in Augsburg that has a familiarity with the children going forward. Let's do it.
And we get the police officer on the streets during the summer.
So that's not always true. But I I would say I support an S R O. But again, during this legislative legislative session for twenty twenty two, Patrick Galvin sponsored a bill for the Senate four two eight six to actually pay for the S R Os in the schools. I would like to see what happens with that first, because if that's the case, I don't want in every school since someone else is going to pay for it. I I don't really personally, I believe having an S R O being a law enforcement is important. To me, it's not what department supplies it. I believe it's a I would rather see one in each school, and there's ways to do it without having a municipality involved. The school system can step up. And I would also like to see if the school system has a policy and procedure written of what the S R O does on their premise and what's expected. I don't think it exists. I don't think it ever should have been done without it. But I I want I I've committed to one, but I would rather wait to see what happens in this session, whether or not it passes. And if it does, then put one in each school because each one of our schools is as important as one. And I don't know why sticking this one person in, you're you're protecting all the kids. I know other people have different opinions to that, but and I know we could say he's here this day or he's over here another day. But you don't know when my what's going to happen to my kid in school. So why not protect them all?
I think this, I'm sorry, Counselor. I was gonna say during our meeting, I think the school was also supportive of that. If if that if that comes to fruition, I think they certainly having someone else pay for it is helpful and having having additional resources in all the schools. So I I think this would this, I guess, would be our backstop is what I would call it if that doesn't happen. I I also, you know.
There's three though. We also have the county to pick it up too. Seeing that we also pay county taxes and we pay city taxes, it's the same service. Again, we're duplicating services time to time again. We're still duplicating dispatch. We're still doing a lot of things. But we're paying twice.
The only other point, I just, even if the state were to pass this legislative session, I the the rules and implementing procedures, I don't think would ever be on the street to cover this year, Counselor or Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. I don't. I don't think it would be on the street, even if it got passed right away, it would take the agency some time to to adapt it. So I think you'd be looking to follow in here, so.
But even again, with the three in schools, you can still be retired and do it and have three for almost a similar cost. And again, you're talking about safety, not where a guy works.
With with, yeah, you know, I I don't necessarily disagree with Counselor Fisher, although, you know, Senator Galavan is in the minority. And there's currently no no support or well, I shouldn't say support. There may be support, but there's nobody in either Democratic Conference in the Senate or the Assembly carrying that bill. And they probably more than likely won't just due to party politics. And more importantly, going forward, even if it were to pass, as the city manager mentioned, it's going to have to go through its bureaucratic levels, and you probably wouldn't see it until twenty twenty four to begin with. Because it would have to go through budget, and then it would have to go through all the state schools and all the different municipalities. But more importantly, I don't I don't see why we're stalling when the need is there now. And if we can get one in a building now, I don't, I I think we're we're not we're not doing our due diligence. And then if the legislation does pass and carries sponsors in both houses on the Democratic side and and it gets done, then, you know, God bless, man. We get one in every 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 building, you know, you know, if that's even feasible. That's better come with a price tag as well. So with that being said, I I don't see why we're we're sitting on it now. You know, we again, we have a contract with them, and I think it's our obligation to protect our children and our future leaders.
I agree, but again, we had a bill for our extra one percent. And Senator Ritchie, who was in the minority, was able to get it passed, didn't pass in the other house. But who knows, might get lucky.
Yeah, because, yeah, and and that was all due to politics. And, you know, it was simple home rule legislation. It's it's pretty simple. It's usually a sign off and a check off. And, you know, I've already stated as to why I I don't think it got done in the assembly. And Patty Ritchie didn't get it done until the last hour, and she ran into hurdles as well. And it's a lot of it has to do with a lot of the actions that right here that that we're sitting in front right now.
But I just hope.
Some relationships that we have and don't have.
The next one?
So again, just looking for council's, you know, internal action on this. We talked at the last meeting about designating liaisons for each of the different local, state, school board, et cetera, officials. So just ask Counselors if you could please refamiliarize yourself with that presentation and and we could start to move along establishing some liaisons to some of the different organizations. The the governing body organizations, I think it would be be beneficial.
Does anyone else have any old business?
I got some items to discuss. Ladder truck. I know that we just received crap. We had a lengthy discussion about which truck to pick. Both trucks with a seventy five foot ladder. And the truck that we have that we're replacing is a hundred foot ladder. And the recent fire at the towers, it's my understanding that that hundred foot ladder barely did its job on the six floor. So I wonder if it's to get a ladder truck with a seventy five foot ladder here, we should be going for something bigger. I know Mr. McCarthy did a lot of explaining, and he talked about the maneuverability of the longer truck in the city. And the seventy five footer was more advantageous to that. And I don't know if it's too late, if this contract's been signed, if we can give that truck back or not. Talk about a hundred footer.
If you want a hundred foot, why not just keep the hundred foot long with the seventy five foot?
I don't. Can we do that? Is it? Is it in shape? Is it operable to do that and last a long?
Worked on this one.
Thirty one year old.
So that truck is good forever?
No.
I thought it was on selection.
No, and it's performed aberrantly without without a doubt, but it's it's reached its shelf life. So the decision was made, the smaller truck will be on every call. Single excellence instead of two. We are losing twenty five foot of aerial capability, which will lose us about a floor at the tower. So it's been able to barely reach six, will be able to barely reach five. I don't think the I don't think that that was that was something we certainly considered or figured that. But from from my perspective, having the truck on every call, not having to wait for additional people to come to bring the truck outweighs that. It'll be on all calls. It can be used at a wider range of calls. And again, we don't have a ladder truck that reaches four, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. We 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 certainly saw a pretty extreme situation without a doubt, but that's that's not the normal. But I don't think losing twenty five foot of aerial capability for the other benefits that we're getting, again, more maneuverability and having the truck more accessible on on a wider range of calls, calls that we more prominently see is is certainly the outweighing factors. No doubt, you can't have it all, but you can, you'll be able to to see the the difference in the wheelbase in the truck that we're purchasing versus the, you know, one we have now. So I think we considered all those factors, and yes, we have signed the contract and that we take and deliver the truck within the next three weeks.
What was the length of the ladder trucks that came from the other departments? Do you know?
I don't. So Canton and Wadings' trucker are tower trucks. They Yeah, those those tower ladders are typically a hundred foot trucks. They're 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 designed to make that that tall reach and get, you know, numerous people on those buckets. Much, much more expensive truck, probably more in a million and a half to a million and seven range for a truck of that caliber. And again, not a not a real maneuverable truck that you take on a wide range of calls. It's a truck that sits in the fire station waiting for a specific, specific use. No doubt, walking people onto that platform is is a whole lot safer and different approach. But it's it's also an entirely much more expensive asset and piece of equipment that, again, would sit in a fire station and not not be used at many calls. We'll use the seventy five foot truck a whole lot more often.
So, all right, that's it. Don McCarthy, I asked you, and I know that he gave us a lot of insight on the trucks when we talked about it, and I asked his job position, administrative assistant. Can't find the line on the budget. Can the comptroller point that out? I don't know if she can do it right now, but I'd like it, please. They said, thank you. And then the last thing you have is a lot of people are asking that city hall be open five days a week to the public. I know we talked about cleaning city hall and things. I don't know if that's still going on necessarily. I know we have a cleaner here. He doesn't clean every night or things like that. I'd like to see council discuss opening it five days a week instead of four. That's my last that I have.
No, I would support five days a week, I think.
Yeah, I.
I don't think there's that that much traffic flow coming in and out that would interrupt the daily work. I'm not here, so I guess if there's a anybody says the traffic flow, they're beating down the doors every day of the week, and they can't get anything done. But I don't see that. I drive by all the time, and there's very rarely cars out.
I'm fine with five, five days. I don't know why we're at four. Maybe there's a justification for it. I'm fine with five.
So we were at three. Oh, I'm sorry. So we were at three. We've we've increased it to four as the COVID, you know, restrictions and the numbers get better. But we also are taking a look at the workload. The decision to to have a closed Friday was was unanimous throughout the staff. The city offices are very busy. I mean, less less staff does less work. And so the staff needs a day where the windows are clogged up with people so that we can we can get the work done done efficiently. I think we showed you one example, the foil requests, for instance. People can minimize that all they want to, but but it's a significant increase in the workload. We went an entire year without people paying their water bills at city hall. Everybody paid their water bill. There is no reason people need to come to city hall to pay a water bill. It's it is resources we don't have. It is business as usual that we can't do. You can't have a city workforce with thirty less people is what we have over the last two years and expect to be continuing everything exactly the way we were doing it. So I'll be happy to 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 let council take a look in the session. Welcome to come and spend some days here. But each of the offices, in particular, the city clerk and the comptroller's office that have minimal minimal staffing in there, there's a lot of foot traffic that comes through. So Friday gives us a day where the windows are closed, does give us a day to to assess, deep clean the building, make sure we've taken appropriate precautions. So I would say it's a combination of both things. It's a it's a day to to recover and make sure the facility is staying clean and safe. But it is also a reflection of 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 less staff and Uh, but it is also a reflection of, of, of less staff and, uh, that's one of the areas, one of the things that we were able to do less of. Again, I'll say the, the things that I think we can do without, uh, and we'll be bringing those things to council's attention soon. There are several functions, uh, that we'll just have the need to stop doing here at City Hall. We can't, again, there's just not a need for the public to come here to, to pay a water bill. Most places don't, don't even do it anymore. You, you pay it online, you pay it in the mail, you put it in the Dropbox. Again, we did it for a whole year and, and the city functioned just fine. So, so it's, it's one part workload and one part continuing to just pay attention to the, uh, the COVID restrictions. I don't, I don't understand the mentality that says the COVID restrictions are working and the numbers are going down. So let's stop doing the restrictions and the things we were doing that made the numbers go down. It doesn't, doesn't make any sense, especially during the tail end of the winter season and the flu season. I think we should, we should continue to, to make, uh, smart decisions based on science and data, not, uh, what, what people feel is they'd like to have. We, we would, we'd like to have no restrictions, but, um, but, but again, I'll want to, I don't want to over, uh, over underestimate the, uh, again, the city staff, there's less city staff, which means there's less people to do, to do certain functions.
And I think sometimes like over the last couple of years, we've gotten used to not doing things in person. And I think some people enjoy coming in. I know we say it's not an essential function to pay your water bill. But when the, our 75 year old neighbor comes in to pay his water bill, that's probably the only time he gets out and talks to somebody. I mean, so yes, we have essential functions that need to be done within the city with less staff, but we still need to look at it from that point of view. It's not just, you know, black or white. Some of these people, the only interactions they have are when they come in to pay their water bills or they come in and they say hi to Kathy as they walk by, they stop and pay their water bill, they might swing into, you know what I mean? Like, I just think that it's more than just black or white. And I think we do have a lot of elderly people and, you know, I know some people that's, that's what a lot of people miss is just the personal interaction, not necessarily the act of paying the bill. So I'm just, there's just ways to play devil's advocate with both, both ways of thinking.
There, there is, and I think all those things, Counselor Kennedy, we recognize, um, that again, Monday through Thursday are four days in which people can do those things. And, and I would really say to council, uh, these, most of these discussions, it's fine to have them now, but we, we debated a budget for the better part of two months. Uh, we, we have the resources we have to balance the budget. I, I asked all of you then, I'll keep asking you now, when you want something else, you have to tell me what we're not going to do. There is no additional resources to hire one more person.
What about opening, what if we do like a, a poll for the citizens if we're not going to open five days and find out what day they would like to see City Hall closed? Cause I know a lot of people who work half days on Fridays, so a day that they could come take care of business is Friday afternoons. So is there a way we could put out a poll on the city's page and say, okay, City Hall is going to be open for four days? Which day would the residents of Augsburg like to see City Hall closed? And maybe nobody does business on Tuesdays, you know what I mean? So maybe Tuesdays is the catch up day, not necessarily Friday. Is there any way we can look into doing something like that?
Yeah, we could. If you remember that we did have quite a bit of feedback, uh, when we were posted the three days and a lot of the suggestions were to have consecutive days. So it wasn't confusing to people. It's today, the odd day it's not open.
Right.
You can easily remember it's open Monday through Thursday.
Or Tuesday through Friday and close on Mondays to catch up from whatever's left in the Dropbox from the week. I'm just saying, is there a way we could maybe do that?
And, and I think-
I don't know if they're-
From the staff's perspective, I think we'd have, uh, they, we'd probably all prefer the Tuesday, Friday opening. Monday tends to be a busy day, lots of things going on, but, but I think our, our feedback from the public was the Friday. But we can, uh, we can certainly put it up on the website, run another survey like we did.
Just see how many responses we, and if there's no responses and people don't reply, then at least some people who are against it, they have that option to, to be heard and then it-
It also be nice to know what the staff recommends also to figure that in like, you know, for productivity.
Devil's advocate here. With, with that being said, it's, uh, you know, you, you, we're doing more with less all the way across the city and every agency that we have. This is the city's building and, uh, the city want, the city residents want it open five days a week. And I think it's our obligation to do that, um, for council members from what I understand, myself, Dan, Nicole and Counselor Reese are in support of opening it five days a week. And so let's open it five days a week.
Citizens also want, you know, they want, we want a, a new, uh, sewage pump station over on Main Street for, uh, residents over there.
We're going to get one.
Who also like, um, you know, uh, beautiful playground, pavilion and, and amenities that more set. If, uh, the city manager said, you know, you start taking for these things, you're going to lose those.
Just handed out a 17% raise across the board for, for, for members of a bargaining unit.
I don't think you should be really talking about how much raises are handed out because you also handed out some good ones yourself.
We just passed the resolution in public to support it.
So.
What else we got?
This brings us to new business. Anyone have any new business?
Well, that was my three. I don't know if anybody else has. I had the former St. Joe's and Lafayette Street. We're supposed to be going to auction, um, back three meetings ago, I believe. Was there dates at for public auction?
I don't think so. And I'll get back to you. I think, uh, you saw Andrea's, uh, that, 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 I, I would say where she briefed tonight is kind of, uh, level one and two of her priority list. Um, that's, so I'll, I'll find out where we are with that. But I'm, you see, there's just some pretty heavy, heavy hitting projects on there that are consuming a lot of the times.
But this one's pretty much about itself.
Yeah. I, I know they all seem that way, Councilor, but nothing, nothing goes here on its own.
My next one, it was talked about a while back. I think John brought it up. And it, it's a good thing, I think, and we should have a, um, cameras in different locations in the city, some stationary that stay, some that can be moved around as, as a need, you know, with input from the police, um, what's happening at the time? Cause there's, there's, it's impossible. Even if you had 40 people out there, you're not going to see, you know, when something's coming, once it's, when it left. It's, it, it would be ideal to, uh, be able to track a lot. And back, I believe back when the, uh, when the little homage girl got, uh, taken, the cameras were like extremely important in the recovery of that little girl. Um, in town, there's a lot of things to have, a lot of times, different times, night, uh, different cars. Um, this gives another, um, not a free set of eyes, but, um, another set of eyes, like in all different spots in the city. And it's, yeah, it, it might be a little costly at the beginning, but, you know, I keep seeing where people are constantly asking other people. Um, do you have a ring cam? You, did you see this? Did you see that guy? He broke in my car. You know, which direction, which direction did he go? You know, a lot of times they'll tell you, because these guys are, you know, creatures of habit, will hit the same people every night. Um, same area anyway. Um, but I, I think that, you know, we talked about it, I think it was back in 2020. And, uh, it never went anywhere and because it was always something else that stepped to the side. And at this point where everybody's, you know, says there's not enough, well, let's, let's use some technology and, and aim every which way we can.
Yes, so Chief Kerns will have an update where he is of that. I think it, uh, it either last, something is last meeting, one before, I think, you know, we gave him the task. So he'll have an update, uh, during his department update, uh, next meeting where he is with that project. Now they've been working on, I think, one of the things he was preparing for council was where we currently have assets in place. So council could see those things and then see what his recommendations are for, uh, for potentially adding the diff, uh, additional assets. And, and ultimately what the, you know, what the workload would be. There is an initial cost up front, but there is maintenance, et cetera. So it's making council aware of all those things. And then we can start the, the hunt for grant funds and be prepared a bunch of times.
One more, um, to tax exempt property. Um, I know that the full assessment is going to take that into consideration, but it's going to take a long, lengthy process. Uh, maybe we could get some type of legal brief or, uh, on the tax exempt. I've, I've been looking it up and I've been going through it and some stuff that people basically create their own missions. Um, and if there's 60%, that's, we're not collecting anything from. And even if we find 20% that are in violation or it's a gray enough area that they should be paying, um, I, I think we need to start moving in that direction. Because even the 20% equal to the, the cuts that, um, the tax cuts we did is, is would be $1.2 million. So, you know, let's look for another source of revenue too. And if, and if they're in violation, they're in violation. And, you know, there's no difference that everybody's sitting in this room paying taxes.
Just, yeah, just to clarify, like, so it's not 60% of the properties except it's 60% of the value. So like the bridge is valued at $20 million. I mean, that's a huge hit. I'm guessing it's, you know, school district's 30 million, city's 30 million, port authority, the port property, you know, there's another 20, 30 million. So it's the value that's, that's out of whack. And I mean, it's a hundred percent of the people paying a hundred percent of the taxes with the exception of your not, not for profits. And, uh, but it's all, yeah, you can look at those, but I don't think it'll result in a lot of revenue. We should look at them anyways, because it will, because it will result, that's, you gotta be fair. And it's, yeah.
I, I don't think it's fair to paying taxes and sitting over there, they're not.
Yeah.
And-
Unless they're accepted by-
Yeah.
By law.
And, and they're, and they're within that confines of that box.
Yes.
To be accepted.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher, I just asked for the leeway here. We, uh, you, you, again, you saw the list of projects that are going on. Um, this assessor's office is going to be busy this year working with the, I, is one of the things I briefed, um, you know, in our financial brief last time was, was just this topic. And I'd like to be able to, uh, have the assessor continue looking at what we think might be some, um, some obvious ones or some high points that we've got to, we've got to work on. But I, I do think that allowing the, the process that we're, we're paying fairly substantially to our associates to, to highlight all these, we'll give them as part of the scope of work, you know, kind of the evaluation, if you will, to determine, uh, is property being used, uh, for the primary mission, which is kind of paraphrasing the language that it needs to be to, to have the tax exempt status. What we will have, um, uh, the first, excuse me, meeting in April for you will be an update in the map that we have, the breakout that will show you what is state owned, what is federal owned, you know, what is nonprofit, you know, groups, et cetera. So you'll have that breakout and then we can perhaps chart a, a, a little initial course forward. But I, again, any work that we do, city tax bills are going out, you know, here in a few weeks. So any work that we do, now anyway, likely wouldn't kick in until next year. So it just, I'd like to kind of roll all this up and with a comprehensive review. So council looks at it, makes some decisions. Um, without a doubt, um, there, there won't be any nonprofit group and it'll be the nonprofits we're talking about. It, it won't be challenging the state or the federal government. Are they using their property accordingly? So I, I suspect any nonprofit group will, will not agree. Um, that will, that will potentially pose us some, some challenges to look at. So I'd like to be able to, to make sure we've done a comprehensive job. Uh, we don't appear to be highlighting who we think may be the problem or not the problem. We look at, we look at everybody in that status all at the same time and, and council's able to make those decisions to, to potentially change anything or give directions for, for properties to be built, uh, going forward. So I understand the frustration. Again, we, we briefed it as part of the, the financial plan, there's no doubt. Um, but I, I would say even if we cleaned up across the board, all the nonprofit, even if it just all went away, the preponderance is still, you know, going to be, uh, uh, going to be the, the properties owned by the state government. Those, those are the ones we need to, to run down, the, you know, the properties that are abandoned, not being used, et cetera, that, that really, and those, those are where the properties that are on the waterfront that are going to be the most valuable. So our long-term, uh, impact. So I think, you know, getting, getting something in motion with the state a little more definitive rather than what we've had in the last couple of years on acquiring that property or, or, or pushing the state to make the decision to start, uh, parting with some of that, that surplus property. So I will, we'll, we'll get you, um, kind of the initial rundown at the first meeting in April, um, you know, what, where we are now at the current status.
Did, um, that piece of OBPA land, the big triangular piece, is that, has that changed, Andrew?
In the corner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, it has. Okay. And I, it's my understanding that, um, OMH, uh, is prepared to, I guess the ball's on our court in terms of getting back to OMH with, uh, I'm, I'm not even sure.
No, the, the ball was, uh, the ball was really in their court. They were going back to determine now what could they start doing, uh, by way of marketing. Again, it, it, it doesn't seem to pass the logic test. Why would the city take their property and only market it if it's the state's property? It's not property we want. I think there were some people at the state that, that, uh, had the belief for a while, uh, between OMH and DOCS, uh, that the city had a use for it. The city wanted it to be able to resell it and get it back in the tax roll. We didn't have a specific use for it. So through those, those recent discussions, it kind of came out, why, why is the city taking it just to remarket it? Why isn't the state working it?
City had a developer too. Yeah, they actually have plans and then they would have moved into the seniors.
We, we didn't have a city use. I think some people under that impression. We had a city use. We wanted to build something there. So, um, so again, we need, uh, there, there, I think now, um, obviously there's been some changes at the, at the correctional facility. So, um, we've, we've got to, we've got to regroup, um, with the team that we had because some of the, uh, some of the concerns that were being posed by docs may, may certainly not be, be issues now. So, uh, again, I, but I, I still feel strongly about this when somebody in council needs to represent this at the elected official level. The agencies will work well with the city staff when they're given appropriate legislation, uh, in or direction. I just think that there has to be the continued push from the, from the Assembly and Senate, uh, positions representing this district if we're going to get meaningful, uh, action, uh, done there. I, I don't, I don't believe, and I, I can't imagine that any of you believe that our best interest really would be for the city to take these properties on and then, you know, potentially expose ourselves to the liabilities or the costs to do them. I mean, I think the first thing should be the state, uh, making, making things, uh, rights and marketing these properties and getting them, getting them sold off to the private sector, making the moves at the psychiatric center that, that could be made to consolidate and be able to, to parcel out pieces of land. But I, it's not going to happen at the agency level. There's going to have to be continued, uh, elected official and legislative pushes to occur. And, and I think as we've identified, this is not a topic that's just germane to Augsburg. Um, I mean, you can, you can drive around the North Country to places that have got, that have got these. Uh, so I think there's, there's plenty of momentum that could be gained by the legislative, uh, group working this through some of their counterparts. Bipartisan should be no question on this issue. This is, this is just community issues. How many communities are sitting with these properties in blight, uh, not on the tax rolls, not being, you know, used for some, for some, of some purpose? We, we probably are a, probably a, a pretty stellar, not good example, because a lot of ours is, is pristine waterfront properties.
My understanding, my understa-, apparently OMH is, uh, telling Senator Ritchie's office that, uh, the ball's in our court and they're waiting for a plan from us. So if you could say, if you could say, if you have time to set up a call, I'd be happy to participate in it this week.
That'd be great. Yeah, we'll do it.
Go with eyes.
Is the, uh, the 1% um, where we got it passed with Betty, with Senator Ritchie and we didn't with Sonny Walson? Is this, has there been any contact, um, actually since it hasn't, when it didn't, since it hasn't passed in this, in the session closed, um, has anything been prepared or done? Um, or any communication between elected officials as far as where we stand or where we're moving or if the wheels are just off the truck or we-
I'm glad you brought that up. So I have Dr. Ritchie's office on that as well. And, yeah, they're waiting for, uh, well, a consensus or a, or a resolution for, I'm, I'm advocating for getting the home rule passed on the half of the, of the 1% so that it's codified in law, so that the county, you know, each year doesn't say, well, we're not giving you 50% this year. We're giving you 45 or we're giving you 35. So we need to get that accomplished. So if there's a consensus on that from the council, that, that's what we should be working on and have a resolution for the next meeting, or at least a consensus tonight. And if you still want to pursue the 1%, just leave the other bill in and, and see which one passes, you know? Um, but we gotta, we gotta get that, we gotta get that half percent in, you know, into law this year.
Like, so we, we've had Coughlin and Garrett working, um, uh, with the summonment's office. I'm, we should have the, the revised legislation back any day. And then as Counsel Reese just said, I, we need to know what I'm putting in there. Is it a half a percent or, or, or the full 1%? The, the language, uh, is getting updated. I, I think some of the language added in last year's bill wasn't, wouldn't have been effective in preempting the county's authority through the entire county. We didn't have that language written there appropriately. Since the county's giving it to us, I know it's not such an issue, but I think if we want the legislation to be binding like we do, we want it right. So, uh, so they're working on, on getting the legislative language right. Um, but as Counsel Reese just said, I think we will need to attach a resolution to go with that again, um, and it will need to stay clearly. It would be helpful for me. I, I feel like I know, uh, council's, uh, consensus at this point, we've kind of been moving forward with the idea of, of solidifying the- It would be helpful for me, I, I feel like I know council's consensus at this point, we've kind of been moving forward with the idea of, of solidifying the, the half a percent. The, the towns and villages are not receiving half a percent of that right now. So don't know that the city going after such a greater share, when the towns and villages are, are getting just ten percent of the, of the last penny would be, would be an effective strategic move for us. So I think, I think the half a percent is, is probably the right move. But we will, as soon as I have, I'll have that, I'm sure, for the next meeting. And then I'll just need to put it in resolution form to go along with that.
That'd be great. And, and their, the resolution the county passed, so they would support it this time, which is something we didn't have last year. And so that's significant, so.
I, I'm thankful that they gave it, but, you know, like John says, it's a resolutions, you pass a resolution tonight special meeting tomorrow and do a different resolution and that's not what the favor is for.
Well, you can't budget your year.
No, I know it.
Yeah.
And that's, no, I mean, and it's going to expire and who knows in November, who's going to be left or how it changes, how the distribution changes. It's got to be moving along.
And would, uh, do you guys know if, if the pumping station or the hydro station, are they, are they current on fees and taxes and everything? Is that, is that problematic anymore or is it, are they current?
It's, it's problematic. We're, we're working on, now it's gonna, gonna be a matter, we'll be briefing and soon the executive session will be a matter of litigation. You're talking about the hydro station, the ampersand, it's owned by ampersand. There's we're, we're current.
There's got to be language in the contract, which I, I don't have a copy of. There's got to be language, if you don't, if you don't pay, then it gets terminated. So I mean, I just don't want to, you know, it's like, we should take some action if it, if it's problematic.
Briefing forthcoming, there's, there's, there's a number of issues, some are just past, past mistakes. It's, it's a, it's, it's fairly lengthy. The legal team's been working on it for a matter of a, a couple of months now with ampersands, legal team, with the school district's legal team. So there's some, like to not comment at the moment, I just need to get the summaries. It, yeah, it's, it's, it's a long-term agreement that is, that's crossed a couple of different companies. And I think some things were lost in translation over the years. And now we're, we're certainly culminating down to the he said, she said boards that really won't matter, because it's not what's written. So we'll, council will get something soon, soon as, soon as Scott Colley's got it finished.
I think we've covered all business, new, new business. I think you go. Items for discussion.
So council, in front of you, you've got the proposed, current proposed rates for the pool. Something we, I know we've batted around a couple of times at meetings and officially in some discussions, what rate to charge, to charge any rates, etc. This is staff's proposals, Andrea can speak to more detail if you need it. I think we're just, we're looking for, does council want to continue to charge, not charge, you know, etc. What is your, what is your pleasure on the pool rates? I, from my perspective, I would just say this, we, the revenue source that we derive from this is not significant. I hate to see us holding things like fees for the pool hostage in a, in a budget year. In a tight budget year, whether we charge pool fees or not is not going to make or break the budget. I know one of the discussions we've had, the staff level, is about non-residents and do we charge that? For people that just don't live here in the city, I would submit to council, generally, most of the people that live outside the city that come here, people that probably really don't have a lot of other options. So I think right now, staff has brought this forward, is, you know, is, is going forward. We need the guidance, the pool season's right around the corner. Andrew's prepared to answer questions and he just liked to know your.
Good to me.
Are there any grants we can apply for, like, like Mackenzie could work on to like have the fees paid for through like a grant? Like, is there like a Swim New York? I don't know, I'm just making it up. But is there something out there for like recreation activities that we could?
I mean, I don't want to say there isn't, but there isn't one that I am aware of. To pay for the fee, I mean, there are obviously recreation grants to pay for improvements to facilities.
Right.
Things of that nature. So Watertown, we looked at Watertown rates, they're much higher and it really probably shouldn't be a surprise. I did include, if you go to our website right now, what our rates would have been or technically are. We're not really suggesting that we should increase the rates substantially, but we did discuss to be consistent with how we bill for other facilities, the arena and the marina specifically, resident versus non-resident. So I don't really know where council is in terms of whether they want to charge a fee or not. But if you are looking for guidance or a recommendation on updated pool fees, you know, have them. So the recommendation from staff is to have a daily rate for residents at one dollar. Currently, we charge one dollar for children and two dollars for adults and a non-resident daily fee of three dollars. And then season passes, we would continue, resident season pass would be fifteen dollars, a non-resident pass would be twenty-five dollars, family resident thirty and non-resident forty. And just a reminder, we, this is, the pool's open approximately ten weeks and this year's budget has it open five days a week.
Unlike the, yeah. How much do you take in here? Do you see six thousand, five thousand?
Well, the city hasn't collected, I can't, I don't have that answer for you, because we haven't collected.
Charge anything, just let it go free. Can we use the ARPA money? Since, you know, we're giving it out to, you know, people that ask for it. Can we create a scholarship through that to direct department for people that one way or the other can't afford it? I mean, it seems like that's what that money's for. And, and, and no harm, no foul, you don't need, you know, another, you know, very thankful to the types of people for years, but, you know, we don't need somebody else to step up. We, we have the funds, I believe, they'd be able to be used for that.
I mean, and I think.
So we shouldn't be charging anything, we should be using that money.
And it constitutes, you know, a lot of humanitarianism too, because I know like in past, like the Salvation Army sets up their food truck and then they hand out lunches and things of that nature. So I mean, I think a lot of kids, when they attend, they don't necessarily have an adult with them, but they, they get lunch. So you know that they're having something to eat and then they go down and they can swim. I just think that when we're looking at, even if we collected five to six thousand dollars in ten weeks, I mean, that's really nickels in the bucket of what we're dealing with. And I don't think it should, we should try to close any type of gap on kids. I mean, just my opinion.
But I mean, that ARPA money, because I'd like to see a splashback inside of that pool. It's just another means of money coming in, but we have some of this money. So I think, you know, everybody, everybody else is getting it. So might as well go to the kids.
We can afford to run the pool, whether we use city tax funds or ARPA funds. I mean, we, we can, we can afford to run the pool without, without charging anything. I don't, so the question of what money we use, I, I would only say, I, I look at this and I, I, from my perspective, I say for us to collect a dollar, it probably cost me three dollars to collect a dollar.
We're paying for somebody to collect the money, we're like at this point.
The, the, I think that really is it. So in, in the years, the Pepsi was providing money with six thousand dollars, it was more than covering the people over there. I, I just think that's probably a decision for council is, do you want us to, to fund it at no cost or do you want to keep, you know, keep doing it this way? I think, I, I know we've had some discussion about expansion, whether it's splash pool or other things. I think that'll come as part of the, part of the ongoing talks about where we're going to the, to the parks and, and things like that. But so I, so to answer your question, Deputy Mayor, yes, our, potentially our could use it, but we have, we have, we have money in multiple locations. I think the question for council is, do we want to establish that, you know, the usage of the pool is free or?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. So we will update the website and remove the current fees so that it's accurate. And that can be taken into consideration when we do our advertisement for activities this summer.
I think too, when people come in to use the pool, even if they come in from out of the area, we're looking at tax dollars. They're stopping, whether it's at the gas station, they're buying Gatorades or, or they pull into, say, pull into any local establishment, they buy gas when they get to town, especially with the price of gas. I mean, people might come into town and they might make a day out of it. They go get groceries, they get gas, they take their kids to the pool at the end of the day and then we move on. I mean, it's all in the grand scheme of things, it's better for Augsburg.
So this brings us to citizen participation. Anyone who might address council, come down if you're here.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for my outburst earlier. It was uncalled for and I just, I'm a person of facts. So when facts aren't presented to me, I, I get a little cranky. So I apologize for my outburst.
And I get cranky too, Penny.
Well, I did want to clarify a couple of things that were said. Loretta Cook was appointed on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, according to the city council minutes. Her expiration date was December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. James Emo and Crystal alone were appointed on July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I sent an email earlier today asking that if you had any questions on the information that I sent, to please send them to me before the meeting, so I could have the information ready for you. I received none. And I do have a question. You appointed Mark to a five-year term that ends in two years. I think that needs to be clarified. You read appoint Mark Demers to a five-year term on the library board. And then we changed the date because of our staggered terms. And I didn't know if that needs to be officially changed.
Yeah, I think that's pretty well understood as a mistake. Kathy, you can do that in a minute or something.
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that was my question. And I will also work with Kathy on the terms of the current trustees. So I'll have an answer for councillor, deputy mayor Fisher, as far as whether the positions were vacant or they just left. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone remotely attended?
Bear with me, Mayor, there was one hand. There's one hand raised, this individual is registered as Penny Sharrow and I will unmute that individual. Now it appears you are self-muted. Here's your line is open.
Okay, good evening. I'll start on a positive note. Thank you, councilors and Mr. Jelly for eliminating the charge for the pool. I do think there's a lot of kids that enjoy their use of that pool. And they made some really good friends down there, regards to staff and, and everyone else down there. So thank you and also lots of would say thank you, I knew her personally and she would be appreciative that the city was making sure the kids got use of water. Okay. My next question is maybe for some clarification, I think maybe I, I mean, I, maybe I don't, I will, probably won't get any answers tonight. But they said the city manager's department was under budget, because there was a position that wasn't filled. I thought there was only one extra position that was proposed. Were there two positions that were budgeted for, for the city manager's department? If not, where does the money come to pay Mr. McCarthy, which I think Mr. Jelly referred to as his administrative assistant in one of the meetings, yet still remain under budget? Where we do, where, if, if, if it's there, where do we find this budgeted position and the job description for it? Because I thought there was only one proposed. Will that position go away when Mr. Jelly leaves? But I don't know Mr. McCarthy's salary, but if it goes away, will we have enough money to hire a fireman or policeman for the remainder of the year? It's just something to think about. Like I said, I thought there was only one position proposed for his office and one was filled, so I don't know what one wasn't filled. So just something to think about and maybe get some answers on it in a future date. All right, and again, thank you very much for the pool and for the kids of Augsburg.
Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Now I will make a motion to adjourn to a second session to discuss the medical financial credit for employment history of a particular person, corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, dissonance, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. I'll second that. Okay. Kathy, if you please go a little off.
Counsel Riche? Counsel Scamperly? Mayor Scally?
Yeah.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher? Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
I'm sorry, will there be action after this?
No.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not anticipate any action following this session. So I will make a motion to adjourn from executive session. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Adjourn.